Yes, please.
Okay, it is 6:30. I call tonight's meeting of the Dalton Select Board to order. And we are recording this on Zoom. The recording is working now, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What is Viking? Viking Jives?
That's a company that did all does all of our snowplow work. All of our snowplow equipment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nineteen thousand. I've got before was the breakdowns.
Yep, brand new transportation on our transport transmission on the 2017.
That's not under warranty or anything?
No, it's a 2017, so it's.
That's the truck that we decided not to replace, right?
No, we decided not to replace the 2016.
Okay.
Well, no, the big dump truck did the international. It's a 2007.
Okay.
That's the one we will be replacing. Yeah.
I don't have them all. memorized in my mind. BF 600, 2023 still under warranty? You know.
It is not.
Brand new. Some of them. On some of these, right?
Yeah.
I've got the volunteer fire department boat co-op agreement that needs to be signed by the board for the year. Thanks.
I make a move from now we sign the federal excess property cooperative agreement. Again, this year, this is for the vote that the fire EMS squad has.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead and sign it.
Is there three signatures on there?
I think there are.
Two.
The chair.
No, sure.
And then there's the roster for the fire wardens. For the volunteer fire department that Ron filled out that also needs to be approved and signed by the select board.
These other checks are people we can contact in case Ron is not around as expected.
No, those are fire wardens. Those are for the forest. They can issue burn permits.
Yeah, but I mean, we'd have to go to one of them if we wanted to have a burn permit at the house or.
Yeah, you can do burn permits online, but you can always call Ron and then if Ron can't do it, he'll let. He'll let one of those guys know that they need to go issue it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Like. I'm a what do you call it?
Fire warden appointment or reappointment.
Fire or reappointment thing.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Two pistol permits.
You just the other one has to sign that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And by the time we get them, they've already gone through their background check.
Yeah.
So it's really just a formality.
Free veteran credit recommendations from the assessor.
I move a motion that we approve the veterans tax credit application for tax year 2025 for MAP 410 lot 059-000 in the amount of 500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion that we approve the veterans tax credit application for tax year 2025 for MAP 413 lot 072-044 in the amount of 500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we deny the tax credit for the service connected disability application for tax year 2025 for MAP 411 lot 024-000 due to lack of the required documentation being provided. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We can come back with the documentation and request to correct.
Did you guys sign these?
No, not yet, sorry. Okay. And is there a spot where we have to note our decision on here?
I can take care of that first.
Okay. Anything?
So we are good.
That goes for the middle ones. So it goes for that.
Yes.
Yep. You brought half of them. Yep. Or a notice of intent to excavate. One gravel tax warrant. One gravel tax warrant.
We need a motion for that. Tax.
I think so.
That's what my.
Yep, I think so.
Make a motion that we sign and approve the gravel tax warrant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Meeting minutes. March thirty first, public hearing for unanticipated funds.
I move that we approve the minutes for the March thirty first public hearing for the unanticipated funds. All in favor?
Aye.
You sign up?
Oh.
Thank you.
Meeting minutes from the Select Board Meeting of March thirty first.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from March thirty first. All in favor? Aye. Did you say aye or nay? I didn't.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Non-public one, two, and three, and four from March thirty first.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, I am one and two, and they are three and four.
Were there corrections that you wanted, something you wanted to change on them?
No, I just, I don't agree with the I see, I don't know how to handle that. I don't agree with it. So I mean, we talked about it, but yeah. I rescind my vote. I'll put you out there. Aye.
That's good for now.
Okay. All right. Do we have an update on selling the blue bags at the country store?
No, I have to coordinate with Sam to get, to get him some bags.
And then regarding the Upton and Hatfield invoices, we did, after our last meeting, have that email from Nate, and he offered to take twenty five percent off of our, so we signed the check to pay them, get caught up. I did see that this afternoon, we got a new invoice.
I haven't seen that one.
Okay, it just came. So what I'd ask is, last week, we talked about keeping the log. And I gave you a a sample, and it has to be confidential because it has things that are non-public, yes. If you can do that, going back to the beginning of February, so that we can reconcile the invoice that came for, there are a couple of there's at least one February item and then March. So if you've had any contact, and some of these are for things with Eric, or some is Eric. But if we keep that log, then we can give that to Judith, and she can reconcile the invoice for us.
Maybe we should, we should keep up on it every month and not let it go ahead of us again.
That's why I'm saying it.
Yeah. What was the guy's name at the store again?
I think it's Sam.
Sam?
Yes. On this invoice, also look at on March seventh, I don't think there's one point eight hours, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. I don't think it's ours. It says, receive and review additional comments and information from the department. Review and prepare analysis of issues related to department, power, and Wilton issues. Exchange email with town council. That does not sound like ours. So when we get the other.
How much was that bill?
This bill?
Seven thousand, I think.
No, no, that one, that single one.
Oh, the single one, four hundred and thirty-two dollars.
And when he gave us twenty-five percent off the bill.
That's, this is a new invoice.
New invoice. Oh, that's new.
This is a new one. We paid the past ones. This is the one that just came today.
Just came today, okay. And you sent that out to all of us.
Judith sent it to us this afternoon.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Yep. And that's where, look at the other items so that we can reconcile it at the next meeting and pay the bill. I mean, the others look like they are. I just, you know, if it was something with you, I have no idea whether that happened or the right timeframe or thing. So that's where, if you get a log, that would be very helpful.
I'm assuming you guys are okay with the check because you signed it, because I didn't get any comments from you. Last meeting, okay?
Yeah. Okay. Regarding the Bean property update, and I'll combine this with the planning board update. At the last planning board meeting, we talked about it. We had a really good discussion because I was thinking that Carol and Pamela Bean had to split a subdivision, lot line merger request. What we really need to do is have the select board do the subdivision piece. This is on that half acre, that little square piece of land. The select board needed to request a subdivision of this bigger parcel. And then after that's sold, then Carol and Pamela Bean can do a lot line adjustment to merge the two lots together. So because this has dragged on for so long, you know, we should have had this discussion as a select board with the planning board back in December, and we didn't. I went on a limb. And at the meeting, I filled out a subdivision request form and signed it. And I don't usually do things that are out on a limb. I'm usually pretty conservative. But I wanted to keep this moving. So I make a motion that we, as a select board, submit a subdivision request to the planning board so that they can have the, and this will be retroactive. To approve that, and it will go to, it'll have the planning board public hearing will be the same time as the first of the select board public hearings.
Can you send us a copy of that, what you signed?
I can.
Okay.
I've got a scanned copy, like a scanned with my phone, so it's not a great copy, but
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a subdivision requesting that's, it's a subdivision form.
Yeah.
Yep, I will send that to you.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I exactly that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. If I forget, remind me, Tom. So we have public hearings for the Bean property for selling that half acre lot to Pam, Pamela, and Carol Bean on the twenty eighth and on May twelfth at six o'clock, so before our select board meeting. And as I mentioned, the first of those will also be the planning board public hearing for the subdivision for, that we've requested.
At May twelfth, that's a, that's a select board meeting?
It'll be at six o'clock, so before the select board meeting. And the same thing on April twenty eighth, that'll be before the select board meeting. And the other thing we got from Nate was the quitclaim deed and a purchase and sale agreement. I was just talking with Carol Bean before this meeting. I gave him a copy of those as drafts, so he can look at them. The thing that I noticed with the quitclaim deed is that it didn't include the water easement that was in the original deed. And that he talked about when he first came and talked to us, and he talked about it with the planning board. So he's going to look at that, and he's going to confirm that if the language that's in the quitclaim deed that we have from the school district is correct and accurate, then I will send that. Nate already has that old quitclaim deed, but I'll tell him to put the language for the old quitclaim deed about the water easement into the new quitclaim deed.
Yeah. Love the way that.
It is. I don't want to say that ten times fast. So any, any questions or, or issues with that? Are you okay with me proceeding?
Yeah, and I looked at the paperwork that you sent out already, and it all looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Did I miss anything, Gary, from the planning board?
When you were talking about the, the water rights, were you talking about the ones that belong to the Grange property that goes to the spring on Kyle McBean's property that goes across
Correct. And we talked, he said, like, up on that property, it goes both ways. So I don't know if we have, that's we have to have that. I mean, it wasn't clear when I read it whether the language covers both of them.
Okay, you weren't talking about the ones that go to the Streeter and Standard properties.
So I mentioned that to Carol, and he said, he's been up there, and there are like, they could see where there used to be. I don't know if there still is. There's not water going to the Grange. The pipes might have deteriorated. But it looked like it went to both places.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah.
So it, it's not clear.
Yeah, yeah, as long as, I think as long as it covers, you know, if the town is allowing them to have the rights to go across this property
With the water.
Existing spring.
Exactly.
Yeah. But the ones that have to do with the deed that came from the school board or the school district to the town, it includes the water rights for the other two properties on this side.
Right, which may be irrelevant.
That would be irrelevant for.
But it wasn't clear to me how to pull those out of that language that was in there.
Mm-hmm.
Or readily pull it out. So I don't know that it matters if it's there.
Yeah, it probably wouldn't matter that the Streeter and Standard rights are the Streeter and Standard, um, rights are there. Um, but I think it should make, it should be clear that there will be rights for the Beans to have water.
Water, right.
This property.
Right. And I was a little bit disappointed that our attorney didn't pull that language from the old deed and put it into the new deed. But we'll get confirmation of the language, and then go back and ask him to do that. And I don't think there were any other things that the planning board discussed, were there?
Um, just that we all agreed that the town can go, should go ahead, um, with the sale of the property, the half acre.
Yes, thank you. Yes, because we did, um, ask for that, and the planning board did vote on that. We needed to get them to um, agree to that. And they did. So that is another piece. And does the conservation commission meet?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So did we, because I didn't send it, did you send anything out to them asking them to approve the sale? We need their recommendation as well.
I don't recall. I'll look. If not, I'll send it.
Will you send it, or if not?
Do you remember, Tom?
Say that again?
If I sent out information regarding the sale of the property, the half acre to the Beans, to the Conservation Commission?
Aye, the only thing that I've seen on that is what Gilbeth sent me, and that was that.
Okay.
Okay. Because that's another piece. We have to get a rep, a recommendation from the planning board and the conservation commission. You know, it's a recommendation, it's not binding. So the planning board did recommend that we sell the land. We need to go to the conservation commission as well. So you'll take care of that before their meeting tomorrow. Thank you. The other thing we have is, um, the agreement with Casella to cover the costs associated with negotiating the host community agreement. We signed that back in December, and they just barely returned it. So, I was a little bit disappointed with their delay in executing it. And they did change the effective date. Um, when we signed the agreement, the effective date was December twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty-four, and they changed it to April second, nineteen twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, excuse me.
You lost a whole century there.
Long time ago. So, I don't know that.
We didn't, we didn't act on it yet, so I mean, it's not like it.
Well, I, I know I, the changes that I had recommended in the agreement would have picked up the legal cost for negotiating that agreement, which was about, I looked, it's probably probably about four hundred and fifty dollars roughly.
If it's, if it's to do with, with the negotiation, they'll pick that up.
It was with the agreement to pay for the negotiation. So I know when the agreement was signed, I had some suggestions that would just clarify that, but we didn't execute. The board did not accept those. So I don't know what, we can put, we can give them an invoice. It's prior to April second, so I think that's another reason for them, they may and may not pay it. So.
I would say, I'd send it, then if, I mean, if it's to do with it, then send it.
Okay.
What was the date on that, on that bill? That?
There are multiple dates, I believe. I don't have it right. I mean, I can look it up.
How much was the bill?
I think it was about four hundred and fifty, four hundred and forty, four hundred and fifty dollars, the total. For committee updates, the building committee has not met. I know with the flood, everything got derailed last year. At some point, I'd like us as a board to look at our goals for the coming year, and I think one of the things might be to get the building committee going again. I know that Adam and the highway department don't have any capacity. No. Um, and speaking of which, we had a, um, we're down one person on the highway department, so we posted for that position, for a full-time position. It's out there on indeed.com, and we also posted for two, um, seasonal employees for the summer.
Temporary employees.
Temporary employees, contemporary seasonal employees.
Yeah. When is Adam thinking about starting in on the roads again? Have they, the frost out where they can start, or?
No.
No, not yet, I don't think. I'm sorry?
Whether it's not really cooperating.
It's changes.
A lot of the roads, they turn into muck, and I figured the frost was already out if it turned into mud already, you know, so.
Yeah, but it's not consistent.
Yeah.
You know, if they get a lot of sunshine, they'll defrost, turn into mud. Okay. Other updates, conservation commission?
Uh, I want to talk in on public on that.
Um.
For the select board.
Do you have any other updates?
No.
What about the road cleanup?
Uh, it didn't have nothing to do with the road cleanup, I don't know.
But that's a conservation commission.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be a good thing for you to bring back to select board meetings, so we can talk about it. So the road cleanup, the annual road cleanup is on Saturday, April twenty-sixth. Believe it's from nine to twelve. So going to be a barbecue afterwards? I know they was talking about.
I believe so. At the fire department?
Okay, we've already talked about planning board. Host community agreement, committee update. Paul, do you want to give a quick update? I'll put you on the spot, since you got, chosen to be chair.
Sure, uh, we had our first meeting tonight at five-thirty till six-thirty. Really, all we did was start to set ground rules. Um, we're going to meet once a month right now. Uh, starting with, uh, May nineteenth, if I recall, I don't have my notes right in front of me at the moment. Um, and that meeting, we will start to kind of dissect and understand what the current agreement is offering, uh, what other agreements, uh, Casella has with other towns, and start to formulate, uh, some of the things that we would like to see. Uh, the plan is moving forward, though, to really open it up to the town, uh, and ask everyone's thoughts and input on, uh, what they would like to see out of the agreement, so that we can form the best agreement based on what the people here in Dalton want. That suffice?
Okay, thank you. Uh, what is the update with the solar grant?
Just waiting for the kickoff meeting in May.
Oh, that's right, I couldn't, I didn't remember the date on that. Do you have a date for that?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. And it's at that meeting that you'll be able to talk with them about how we select a contractor, whether we go with the contractor who gave us the estimate, or have to?
Correct.
Do an RFP, okay.
I think it's up to us.
Okay, but you'll, you'll have to, you'll have to check with Melissa and check, confirm that. Um, I don't think the hazard mitigation, um, grant group that's working on that has met since our last meeting.
Nope.
I don't remember off the top of my head the date for the next meeting. I think it's the end of May.
It's on the website.
Okay, so it is posted.
Mm-hmm.
So if anybody wants to participate, the meetings are by Zoom. And certainly, more select board members other than just me are welcome to participate. Okay, FEMA and repair funding.
Um, they're reviewing all of the information that was submitted for Blakesley. So once they get through that final review, it'll go into obligation, and then we should receive some money.
Okay. Do we have a timeline on that?
No. Because it goes forward, and then it goes back, and then it goes forward again, and then it comes back to us, and then it goes back.
Just clarifying things, and, yeah, typical, okay?
Taking care of any questions, any issues, any, the way it's written, or words, or, yeah. Yep.
And then you and Adam are working on the other.
I'm working on the other mitigation plan. Yep.
Okay. Do we have a timeline on that?
I'm hoping to get it done in the next week or two.
Wow, that's great. And is that all locked up and log combined into one, or is it separate?
No, we have separate plans, separate projects, separate plans.
Okay.
So each road has separate sites, so each site has to be broken down into if there's going to be mitigation, what the mitigation is, all of the different material, equipment, man-hours, what kind of man-hours, what type of, type of equipment? If there's contractors involved, the unit prices, the, yes, it's like putting a construction bid together.
Okay. Well, the good thing is, once that's done, that will help with the data that's needed for the hazard mitigation.
Yes, plan, yes.
The Smith Road is taken care of by the, uh, engineer, is that correct, for, uh, finances, or how does that? Is that something you're working on?
No, we pay the, we pay for the, what do you mean?
Well, FEMA is going to be paying for the Smith Road.
Yes.
And, uh, are you working on that, or is the agent working on that part of it?
No, that's us. The, the engineer just did the design and did the bid, and will help along the way if we need help managing the job.
Of course, all these are reimbursements.
Yep.
Right.
So, we have to put out the money first. Um.
Speaking about Smith Road, though, I did talk to Christina Chamberlain today. She called regarding something else, and I mentioned to her that we needed to, um, work in an area of her property. Uh, she said it was not a problem. She wasn't aware that we were trying to get in touch with her. And, uh, it's no, no problem at all, she said, so.
So do we actually need to have her sign the easement?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so. Of course, Nancy was here this afternoon as well, and she said that it looks like some more ground has kind of sloughed off and fallen into the creek area, so the sooner the better, we get it done.
And are we ready to, um, look at a contract yet? I know.
Yes.
That.
Yes, we are. Are we at that point?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, so J A McDonald was the lowest responsible bidder, uh, at the engineer's recommendation. Um, they, they say that we should, um, award them with the work. They've already signed the subcontract agreement. I went over the agreement. It's all pretty typical as far as construction goes, as far as payment, retention. Um, you know, fines if they don't finish on time by seven thirty-one, um, so on and so forth. So, they've already signed the agreement. The signature page is on top here. Um, and then we also have the, um, the notice of award that needs to be executed by the board, along with the notice to proceed. So the notice of award awards them the job. The contract is obviously includes the scope of the job, um, all the timelines and the specifications, and then the notice to proceed is actually telling them that they can start work. So we have all three documents.
And I noticed in this that, um, Ekman Engineering continues as the engineer on the project.
Absolutely. Yep.
Authority, so that's, that is good.
Yep. Um, J A McDonald is working on their bond for the project, so they'll send that in as soon as they get it from, back from their bonding company. Um, so without the bond and insurance, they won't be able to start. But they are ready to start as soon as, uh, the road dance gone, yep.
And and so Ekman has reviewed all the engineering pieces of this and all that, so.
Yes.
Um.
And they also are the ones who, um, did the contract.
Right.
Everything is out, right out of the specifications that they that they generated for the whole, the entire project and how it was done.
Okay. Um, I make a motion that that you, we'll get it versus, I mean. What's the, um, utility line moved yet?
I think so. Adam was going to check on that, and I forgot to ask him when I saw him today. I think, I think so.
So that was consolidated, right?
Right.
Then had to start, had to be done before the project started, correct?
Correct.
I mo, make a motion that we approve and sign the contract with J A McDonald for the Smith Road work, and that we also sign the notice of award and the notice to proceed.
I'll sign them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Will be signed as you own?
Yes. So who do you guys want to designate as the representative for the project? As far as the work goes?
Is that administrative or hands-on?
I don't think we're going to have a whole lot of hands-on, other than coordinating with the engineer. So, probably a little bit of both. Maybe more administrative. Maybe more administrative than hands-on. But it's, everything is done by the specs, by the drawings and by the specs, so there's not really any decision-making type of things. If there's any changes required, then they would be required to come before the board for approval.
So it makes sense probably for you rather than Adam to be the designated.
And then if I need to go to Adam, I can. I mean, I, you know, if it needs to go to you guys, I go to you guys. If I need to go to Adam, I go to Adam.
Um, I motion that Jeanette is the designated representative on this project.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Now, um, you had an update from the school board? Do they want to meet in Dalton?
Yeah, they tried to do a meeting in each one of the communities that are included in the S A U. So they wanted to know, um, obviously April tenth is past. Um, you sent this to me the day after we met. So they have um, May eighth or May twenty-second as options for them to hold the school board meeting here in our building. Um, they would arrive to set up about five fifteen. The meeting starts at six, and then they don't run any longer than two hours. So essentially, they just have some tables and seating for board members and chairs for the audience, similar to what we did last year.
And we could post it for people to attend.
Yes.
Do we need a select board member here?
I don't believe so.
And you were saying, what date again?
Thursday, May eighth, or Thursday, May twenty-second.
And do we need to pick a date?
Yes.
You have a preference either of you?
One of them.
Should we go with the eighth?
Eighth. Right.
Okay. Um, I don't even know if we need a motion on this. I mean, it's really a facility use issue.
Hey, yeah, I don't think so. I think it's just the board choosing a date.
A date.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go with May eighth. And I think it'd be good to put it on our webpage.
Yep.
As an event, so that we
Yeah.
get people to come.
All of their meetings get posted on our website and in our building, because we're part of the S A U.
Yeah.
So they're always posted every.
So maybe in a highlight that it's gonna be here.
Yep, yeah, I always list where the meeting is.
And you said we don't necessarily need a select board member here.
No, but it's never a bad idea to have representation.
Okay, so we had a landfill post-closure report announced previously.
Yep. I think the only page that needs signature is six of six. So I kinda turned the page there, but.
Okay. So when I looked at it, there are some things that they say are outstanding. I mean, I think this, we need to get the report filed. It should have been filed, I think it was March thirty-first, and we didn't get it until April first. From um Horizon Engineers. Um. So I make a motion that we sign this report, and so it can be submitted to D E S. And I'd also like to ask, would one of you go through it and look at what the outstanding issues are? And come up with a, a plan for, for fixing it?
I'd like to look into it more before I sign it. What, what is, what is that?
We got this, we, we got this on the first, right?
Got it on April first. It, it only requires one signature. So I think.
What is, it's for, for Casella, is that what?
No, no, this is our old landfill that's closed. This is the, the, every year we have an engineering report that's required. So Horizon Engineering gave us a report. They were late on it. Um, so we need to submit it. And it basically, you know, I mean, this is something that was sent out to all of us, so.
And I, I got it, I had, I need to look at it a little bit more, but I know the one prior to, there were some things that had been done, had to be done that we did not do. And I don't remember what they asked, don't ask me, but anyways, until I look at it.
And that's what I'm noticing, and, and they still haven't been done, so. What I'm asking is that, you know, we'll head and sign this, which says they're outstanding. But I'm asking that the two of you take this on as a project and look at what needs to be done and figure out what we need to do, how we can fix these things, so they're not outstanding.
Hmm.
And come back at the next meeting with a plan.
Yeah, I'll re- I'll read on it and, and see what I can come up with on it.
Okay. I mean, one of them, I think, is pretty simple, but the other two
Yeah, the couple there that.
are gonna need some, some work.
Yeah.
To figure out how to address it. Okay. So I think I made a motion that we would sign the agreement. And.
That's an agreement, it's not a.
It's not an, it's, I'm sorry, it's just a report. So I don't even know that we need a motion. It's just a report. It's not an agreement. All it is, is signing the report from Horizon Engineering, so it can be submitted to D E S. So I don't, you'll second it? Okay. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. I'm sorry, Tom, my hearing is not very good.
Aye.
Thank you.
I thought I was the only one with hearing problems.
No, even with hearing aids, I'm, I struggle. And a big part of my problem is the clarity of sound, so that's what's tough.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to ask you to repeat yourself. I apologize. Okay, there were a couple of things that were sent out by N H M A. That we should all have gotten, and those are important things to keep on top of. One of them, we've mentioned before, is there is a Senate Bill two ninety-seven. Um, which deals with pooled risk management programs. And this would have a devastating effect on health trust. Again, this, you should have gotten this uh, from N H M A directly. Um, so hopefully you've already read through it. The regulations are so onerous that Health Trust has said that if spill pass, they won't offer health insurance to municipalities anymore.
I read that.
So that would be devastating. If we had to go out on the open market for health insurance for employees, that would be expensive if we could even find a policy. So what they're recommending is that towns um, submit, they have a draft template. The last page of the package. Which basically says that we're a participate, participating member of, and we would fill in um, Health Trust, municipal risk pool. And explains that, and um, we talk about the significant and unrealistic financial and administrative burdens that would affect us. Senate Bill two ninety-seven imposes vague and subjective standards that could trigger unexpected mid-year assessments, disrupt municipal budgeting, and threaten long-term financial planning. It introduces new oversight and administrative costs for restraining local budgets. Mandates new contingency reserve requirements that could cause sudden and significant rate increases, creating volatility and undermining predictability that towns and cities require for responsible fiscal planning. And whereas these provisions taken together pose a serious threat to the financial sustainability, predictability, and effectiveness of municipal risk pools, potentially resulting in higher cost, legal uncertainty, and reduced service capacity for municipalities and other public entities across the state. And whereas Health Trust has indicated that it would cease to operate if this legislation is approved, putting municipal, excuse me, municipal employees' healthcare in jeopardy, and potentially costing taxpayers significantly in the future. So now therefore be it resolved that Town of Dalton, that the Board of Selectmen hereby expresses its strong opposition to New Hampshire Senate Bill two ninety-seven, as it is currently drafted. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen of Dalton urges the New Hampshire General Court to amend Senate Bill two ninety-seven, so that the Department of Insurance becomes a regulator of risk management programs. And please work collaboratively with municipalities and risk pool administrators to support financially sound and administratively feasible approaches to oversight and risk management. So do we have anything that we would wanna change in this template or add? If we send comments to, to the Senate?
No.
I make a motion that we use the template provided by N H M A for responding to um, our, ensuring our opposition to New Hampshire Senate Bill two ninety-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm gonna abstain on that for now.
Okay, so the motion passes. But Jeanette, would, do you have time with all the FEMA stuff you're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
I can do it.
And the other thing that I've been seeing from N H M A is a lot of um they've got a whole list of bills that deal with zoning. And we don't have zoning, but these are imposing state regulations that are taking away local control. And I think we wanna go in like individually and oppose them. It's gonna be tedious, because there are a whole bunch of bills. Um, didn't print it out to bring it with me. As a town, do you, we want to go in? Do you want me to, when I go in, to do it as a town?
That's at uh, at Concord at the uh, at the building, uh, at, at N H M A itself?
No.
No, this is the, the state legislature. And these are, I'm trying to remember, they're, they're House bills at this point.
Senate bills and House bills.
Bills.
There's still, there's.
There's a whole list of them that in H, that we that deal with zoning, and N H M A is recommending opposition to them, because they take away local control. And even though we don't have zoning, we're still under state regs. So I think we want to oppose these. You know, we don't wanna lose control over things like if we had any area, you know, this doesn't necessarily apply to us, but if we, well. Suppose somebody wanted to build something using the um, the sewer on Bridge Street, or subdivide that, but we didn't have the capacity. We wouldn't be able to put moratorium on that to see if we could get the ca- capacity. Or it could change the, the density. I mean, I think we wanna preserve.
They got a list out there somewhere that we can look at?
There was an email.
There was an email. This email came, I think.
It was either Friday or.
Thursday or Friday.
That's N H M A?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't look at them all, so I probably did get it, I'll look at it.
But I think they're coming up soon.
Yeah, they're. I think they either start later this week or next week.
So I think we have to respond.
You can do it right online, it's.
Yep. Oh, actually, the hearings are tomorrow.
Yep, all of them?
Tuesday, April fifteenth, beginning at ten.
Can we, can we vote online too?
Yes, but you have to do it by midnight tonight.
I don't think you can, you're not voting, but you can.
You're just ready to put your opposition. You could do it online. You have to sign in individually for each of them, thanks. So like, one of them is relative to maximum residential lot size.
I saw that one.
Um. Relative to sterile requirements.
Lot has to be this, cannot be larger than this.
A catch-all bill that significantly reduces municipal autonomy relative to development and related requirements. Hmm, so. There's a whole list, um, some are Senate bills and some are House bills that are going to the Senate. Um. So I would recommend we take in H M A's recommendations.
Speak against them.
And speak against them. Um, I recommend going in and doing it individually, and if if you're okay, I make a motion that I'll go in and do it as a town, on behalf of the town.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. But that, do it tonight, cuz they're meeting tomorrow. I mean, I think the deadline is the twelve o'clock the night before they meet, so. Not what I wanna do when I get home, but.
Well, you can make it really easy. You can actually like type up a word document and save it as a PDF or whatever. And then instead of typing it into the body, you just attach your testimony. So you can just do one that kind of talks about all of them in general. Maybe ke- hit key points on the ones that you're super strong, strongly against, or the ones you strongly oppose. And then you can just submit that testimony to every single one, but you have to submit each bill separate.
Each, yeah, and then you could even just go in and say oppose on each bill.
Yeah.
And just say, I wanna preserve local autonomy.
Yeah. Yeah, you.
Local control, local autonomy.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be.
You don't.
Concepts.
And you could just, once you do that, you can copy and paste.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, you do have to go in, log in for each bill individually.
It's a full-time job, keeping track of all those bills and how they affect us.
I'm glad that in H M A, remember there was that bill that wanted to not allow in H M A to act on behalf of towns? I'm glad that failed, cuz we wouldn't be keeping on top of these without N H M A. They earn the money, we pay them for our dues. Okay, do we have any other new business?
I just wanted to have Jeanette give us a lowdown on that Dropbox that came through. And how to use it, and what is it?
So what I'll do is, I'll, I'll try to put together instructions on how to use Dropbox. So Dropbox is just basically cloud storage, and it's secure, so generally, generally, it's secure if you set it up right. Only people who you give access to can access what is shared in that Dropbox.
Hmm.
So you, if you get at, if you are granted access to Dropbox, you have to go into the Dropbox application, which is just web-based, it's online, and you have to make yourself a profile or an account so that you can access the files that you're being granted authorization to see.
So can you send us directions on?
Yeah, I'll try to do that, cuz a lot of people don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, a lot of people.
And actually, I tell you, they, and I believe it's N H M A that sent it out about the scamming, and it's been going on.
Yeah.
And so when I saw that, I'm going, I wonder if that's a scammer on. That was a hundred percent.
I said the same thing.
Nope.
When we talked about a Dropbox for the H C A committee, that would be separate from the one you were given a link to. It'd be a different.
Right. So then when you, like, after you do your profile, you would log in, and it would show different like file folders or whatever the widget is, that it would say H C A documents, or it would say select board documents, or legal documents, or. that it would say HCA documents, or it would say select board documents, or legal documents, or each one is separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I, I'll do my best to put together instructions on how you set it up. And if you can't figure it out, you'll just have to come here and we can go through it together. It's not hard.
That one that Jeanette sent out for us, you can just click on that link and it'll take you right to all the documents.
And I understand your guys' concern because I, even I get links like, click on this to see your invoice, and a lot of our vendors send our invoices that way. So I'm like, I don't know, I really have to look at the email addresses and.
Well, if I don't see your name on top, I don't do it, I don't.
But anyone could come up with an email address and say it's me. They could, they can, when you do an email address, you can have it shown as Jeanette Sharon. So if there's ever something that you, you're not sure, just forward it to me and just say, is this you?
Good idea.
Or text me or call me or, you know, because there's not really any way for me to always be like, hey, yep, this is me, this is legit, this is, because someone else could do the same thing.
Right.
Yeah.
If there's anything that's clicking on an invoice that we have to pay, that's scam. You know.
For you guys generally.
For us, Jeanette knows which invoices she gets electronically, but for us, just delete those.
I mean, I got one today saying, here's your receipt for your renewal. And I'm like, renewal, what should be renewing? I'm like, no, that doesn't sound right. And it's a receipt for a renewal, but it doesn't tell me what I'm renewing. You're going to see a charge for four ninety-eight twenty-three on your, and I'm like, no, I don't think so. You really gotta.
Classic scam.
Yeah, you really gotta pay attention. But if, if you ever get anything in your, it's in question, just forward it to me and.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have any public comments?
I got some questions.
Okay.
Um, for the cemeteries. Jeanette, the Cemetery Sexton email account, did you look into that?
I didn't, I forgot.
Okay. Just curious.
I, I will make myself a special note here. I always specially mark things I have to act on, so I just did that and I will check on that.
Yeah. Can I, can I interject before I forget? Speaking of email, did Emily get her planning board email? And did I get mine?
You should have.
You did?
Yeah, I did.
You should have. I don't think I've got any, should I have gotten a notice?
No, you won't get a notice.
I just should get planning board emails.
Yes.
Can you send me a test one? Or send a test one and we can, but you're on it? Hmm?
Yes.
Okay. Then I probably am.
Yeah, I was asking about the Cemetery Sexton email account because I had two parties last week on the same day, mentioned that, oh, they had sent me an email to the Sexton account. And I'm like, what account? And I wasn't even aware that it was published on the cemetery page on the website. I didn't even know it was there. Um, I think that it was either Jeanette and I had had talked quite a long time ago, or it might have even been Jesse before that. Somebody had said, oh, do you want to use that account? I'm like, oh, no, just use my home email. I was fine. But I didn't know that it was on the website now.
I didn't know we had a Sexton email account.
Yeah. So I didn't realize it, I, because I had read the page, I think, at the beginning when we got the new website.
Right.
Redone, and I don't remember seeing it there. Maybe I missed it completely, but, uh, I looked at it the other night and I'm like, oh, it is there. I wonder if there's any more emails that I didn't know about. And it was just odd that one person had, uh, sent the email, it was at the end of March, like the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. And they hadn't heard from me yet. And so they sent me a message on my phone. And, um, I'm like, oh, and now they had a phone call from a, um, a funeral home. And she said, well, I, I did send you an email this morning, but she said, I, I just, I'm going to call you anyways. But I said, where'd you send the email to? She said, oh, the Cemetery Sexton account. I'm like, okay, that's you in the same day, so.
I, I will send them an email.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you want to use, because I gave you my home email. And if they want to connect it so that that's how I can receive it, um, that'll be okay. Flags for the cemeteries, um, I will get a count of what we've already got, if we've got some left over from last year. And I'll let you know, uh, how many we should probably get.
Okay.
And are we doing bids for the mowing this year?
We, it was already done.
Oh, okay.
Nelson was, Nelson was awarded, same ones that did it last year.
Yeah.
And I know that he said that there's going to be some additional, uh, cost to fixing Cushman, um, where we've had the temporary road for the Smiths.
Uh, maybe.
Really, not a whole lot we could do about it at this point.
I haven't gone into it to look, I'm just guessing that maybe the plow has dug up some dirt.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. Um, probably won't hurt that much anyways because of the, um, the fact that the grass has grown over where the road is and it's hard to see.
Yeah.
So now if they have actually plowed it during the winter, maybe more obvious that, oh, that's the driveway.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And the other question I have is, um, the Blakesley family is interested in putting up a couple of memorial benches for their family, uh, in the John's River Cemetery. They have two sections, um, of lots for their family. And they got together, they wanted to kind of make benches, they've already got them made actually. Um, but they wanted to have benches put in at or near, or in or near their lots. The way the cemetery is situated with the lots, they've always just been pieced together here and there. There's not a good, clean, even, you know, lotting plan like I've mentioned before. People just went and put in their lots next to one another and they're not all, all the same size. Uh, the Blakesleys have a fairly good sized couple of lots, they have several burials. So my question is, there's plenty of room around both of them, both of the two lots, um, that isn't being used, there are no, there's no map of it. Um, would they be able to put those benches in close to their two lots? Um, and the benches are for, not only for their family members to sit and reflect or whatever, um, but for anybody who wants to sit down and use them. Um, I can show you the map where they would like to put them, as well as what they will look like.
Did we get the cemetery surveyed?
Yeah.
I'm still working on it.
Okay. Did you talk to Mark? Did he reach out to you?
I had reached out to him quite a while ago.
Okay.
Like a year ago, and the same with Gardener Kellogg. And they both said, I'll, I'll get back to you. And I never, they never got back to me.
Well, I did see Mark, uh, maybe a month or two ago, and he said he's been super, super busy, but he was going to reach out to you, so.
Oh, okay, that's good. Because I, I have just, within the last couple of weeks or so, I've also contacted another surveyor as well.
Okay.
And last week he said he would get back to me, so.
They're all busy.
Yeah, yeah. Um, these are the, they've already done the granite work for the bench, and I think that's, I'm not sure if that's the seat or the back. I don't know how the whole thing is going to look.
It would be the back so you could read it.
Yeah, so you're not sitting on it. But, uh, yeah, they just, um, one of the family members did some sketch, sketching. Um, and this is the Blakesley Farm, the Ralph Blakesley Farm, um, where Herbert and Clarabelle Blakesley used to own. And then they had nine kids. And so, yeah, so this is, it's the same thing, only one is, it's flipped, it's reversed. So we got the cows in the barn and in the house, and then it's, it's flipped over here. But that's what they wanted to put up. And sorry for the really confusing. Yeah. Okay, so there's two lots. This is the big, a big Blakesley lot. And this one here is as well. Um, and they were thinking of putting one, because there's still some room for some of their loved ones to be buried here. Uh, they were thinking of putting the bench maybe kitty corner right in here. The woods are roughly in here. Um, and there isn't anybody in this area. And all the way down here, it's empty, there's no lots, um, planned yet. Um, so we were thinking that might be a good spot right there.
Are we, in the future, will we want to put lots there?
We could put lots there, yes. Um, there are some right in this area going this direction. These are older ones, older graves over in this direction. So there could be some space in here that could be used. I was thinking when we, when and if we can get some surveying done, this area right through here is what I would like to encompass with, uh, new lots. Um, it could possibly include some of this area here.
Because that would be, my only concern is, you know, like, here, it looks like there's room, which wouldn't be a lot. Wouldn't be something that would be, um,
Yeah.
potentially a new lot.
Yep. Yeah, this hasn't been lauded yet. Like I said, um, all of these sections in here, they're sketched from the nineteen seventies in little eight and a half by eleven pieces. So there's like.
They're all different.
Yeah, so there was one sketch here, there was a sketch here, there was one here, one here. Um, there was some over here, there was one for this Blakesley lot. But they were all in eight and halfway eleven sketches without even done with rulers, you know, wasn't even straight lines.
We really need to get a survey.
So, yeah. Um, this is the area.
This looks like it has room between the lots that wouldn't be big enough for a lot, or am I?
Eh, I don't think I would go with that, maybe. Um, I was suggesting that, uh, I'm going to look and see if there's, this was something done by a former Sexton in the seventies. These all have lot numbers over here and over here. This did not have a lot number, but for some reason he drew it, drew a lot. And there's no name and there's no lot number, so I was going to try to look up deeds. I don't really know what I can look up to find if somebody bought that lot or not. I have no idea. Um, there's no gravestones right here. So, uh, it's possible that this could be used for a bench for their Blakesley lot.
Because this is Blakesley right here?
That's Blakesley, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's also possible that we could put one right in here, it's just a little bit kitty corner from it. But, um, maybe even in front. Because there's nothing, there are no graves that I know of from here to the driveway. So that's another area, this section here, that could be, be a potential part of the survey. No, those are just some of my lines that I've done when I've tried to get everything fit together here. So, yeah, this, these are not lot lines. Um, but yeah, there's, there's nothing, there's no monuments or anything between here and the driveway, it's just all grass.
And then over here, what's on?
Here, there's a, the oldest grave in the cemetery is over here. And there's some others over here, all of, like, basically from here over, um, are all old stones.
So there's no room here between the air and the old stones, or?
I'm not sure. Like, it's possible here. Um, they were thinking maybe putting it here, just the way the trees are, and it would provide a little shade, perhaps.
And, and what I'm thinking of just in the future, we'd hate to have to have it moved to put another lot in, you know, in, I don't know, twenty years, might be a hundred years.
Might be a hundred years.
Maybe it not, I shouldn't worry about that because if you're going to develop this part first, it probably doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I don't think it matters. You're going to put a bench. It's going to be one lot, I would think.
This section here, this odd shaped one here is what myself and my husband and my sister put together. Um, and we did the maps, uh, and we, uh, put the iron pins in, you can see the little dots in here, there's iron pins. Um, and we've got almost a hundred lots, there's like ninety or so lots there that are potentially available.
Oh, okay.
Um, but, and those are double lots. Each one of these is a room for two burials, two full burials. Um, and you can see there's very few that have actually been sold. There's, the ones that have the letter S, these have been sold. Like, here's a block of four that were sold. There's a couple here, there's one here. Um, so there aren't a whole lot that have been sold, and that's been since.
So we have a lot of capacity.
Yeah, there's quite a bit, yeah. It's just the fact that.
I don't think we're going to be around to see this filled up.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
I don't think.
I mean, I don't want to, I'm trying not to create a problem down the road, but it sounds like it's going to be well, well in the future.
Yeah.
Probably pass like the bench.
So I just want to know if we have any leeway, if it's okay for them to put, um, a bench near their lot. Um, you know, close to it, and the same with over here.
I make a motion that we allow our Cemetery Sextons to work with the Blakesley family on placing those two benches near their lots.
Okay. They also said that they have enough family members that they can do the, like, the foundation for it. They wanted to put like a cement pad for it, which would be maybe, I'm guessing, four or five feet long.
Okay.
Um, they wanted to do that, and, um, they would do the work. They're not asking anybody else to do that. All in favor?
Thank you, Terry.
Okay.
Do we have any other public comments?
I got one more. Not cemetery related. Um, I was hoping John Bean was going to be here because he was the one that brought it up to me. Uh, the town pound has been inundated with gravel from last year's flooding, just from the road on Blakesley Road. And, um, he was thinking, is there anything that the, that some volunteers could do to remove the gravel and get it cleaned up? Um, it's not going to be just a shovel and wheelbarrow thing, uh, because there's a lot of gravel in there.
I know it was a lot last year. I thought we were removing some of it, but I haven't, I didn't.
Kyle took some, but he didn't take it all.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, this is last year's picture, so I don't know how much has been changed.
Yep.
Yeah, this is, this is before, this is after. Um, and the sign itself now is on the ground, and John said that at least one post will need to be replaced. Hopefully the sign itself didn't get damaged, this part of it got damaged, I don't know. But he said at least one post will have to be fixed or replaced.
Well, and just before our meeting, um, Mike was talking about it too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was kind of volunteering that I, I could get some of the gravel out of there, most of it.
Because you'd like to have some of the gravel?
Yeah, and, and actuality, you know.
Um.
And I have a tractor and a grader blade, so I can scoop it up.
Yeah.
Oh, it's got to be cold.
We get volunteers to work on and get it back in shape. I think that's great.
I'd take off.
Yeah. Well, John said he's, his father-in-law might be able to loan him his, uh, skid steer. Um, my husband's got a tractor with a bucket.
Yep.
So that's something we could work on, and I would, because I'm on the Historical Society, I'd like to see the stone wall, it was an enclosure all four sides.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that exposed again, and because part of it, you know, you can't even, there should be, there should be a stone wall right in here. You can see it on the backside.
So you should work with, I think all the volunteers should work together to make sure that that's preserved.
Some of the stone wall, I think, got, got pushed back, and it's not where it used to be.
Yeah, possibly, yeah.
I walked by there yesterday, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I haven't looked since last fall.
Messed up.
Yeah, yeah. Um the sign itself, uh the Historical Society purchased and, you know, had created. Um and they paid for that originally, so I did ask at last weekend's meeting if they would be at least consider it, we haven't made any decisions, but maybe we could consider doing uh repairing of the sign. Um and again, that would be volunteers, we'd get it put up and so we just wanted to know if we would have an okay to do that. Um the other thing John mentioned was uh maybe getting, cause he's on the fire department, my husband's on the fire department, but asking if one of the fire trucks can come along with the pumper, and we can use a hose and hose out the the stone wall, hose down the stone wall to get it, clean some of the gravel up around it.
Could get some of the wire out of it anyway.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So that was something that they had also mentioned.
I make a motion that we authorize volunteers to work together, coordinate to try to um rehabilitate the town pound and to repair and replace the sign.
And to let, and the light, take some, and to let Mike take some of the sand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the volunteers who are taking, doing it can
I just wanted Then they use the fire departments.
And let the fire department help with the washing, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, you know, I think that's a good thing to add, is to let the volunteers that are removing the gravel keep the gravel. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll talk to John.
I make a motion that we, we go into non-public session, I know we have a
I have
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I apologize.
I picked up, I brought to us, um I picked up my right to know on some questions. And she charged me eighty dollars, and there's only forty-three pages here.
Forty-three pieces of paper, they're printed front and back?
You pay per page, not it's
It's not per sheet of paper, it's per page, and if there's
One piece of paper is one dollar.
We, we can go back and look at the, look at the statute again.
Then I would have gotten a lot bigger bill than my husband's, so. And then there's a question on um and I know you keep, I keep going over it because it's just not the answer to my right to know. I had a right to know, wanted to know how, what was paid out of the accounts, what accounts for the work done last year and what is left in them? And this does not answer it, what you put on the board there of the town meeting. This just gives a flat rate operating budget. And all that, that doesn't say, I know for a fact that I've taken out of the road crew paving. Money got taken out of that, what is left in that budget?
We don't have a, we don't have a paving budget for the road crew, we have a capital reserve fund.
Okay, what is
For paving?
Capital reserve fund, so that Adam can pay, is what I'm asking, what money is left in it?
So that information is in the town report? The capital reserve stuff is in the town report. The money that was paid out for all of the roadwork that happened from the flooding last year did not come out of regular line item budgets, and that I believe I included in my explanation, and I talked about it at the budget hearing. And I talked about it at the other budget meetings, was all of that money was coded to a special flood code so that we could keep track of it all. So at the end of the day, even though we have separate buckets, one for gravel, one for sand, one for whatever dirt, one for all of, it, it doesn't at the end of the day, as far as the Department of Revenue Administration is concerned, it doesn't matter what bucket it comes out of or goes into, as long as you don't overspend your total appropriations that were approved at town meeting. So I can't, I can't give you, I can't give you a better answer to your question because it didn't come out of separate budgets. I didn't say, okay, four hundred and fifty dollars is gonna come out of gravel and two hundred dollars is gonna come out of sand, because it didn't, we didn't do it that way. It wasn't done that way, it all went to the flood. Everything was coded to the flood. And at the end of the day, we said, how much did we spend this year? How much are we over? Where do we need to find money and where can we get it from? So even though we give those line item budgets, it, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter whether you were under or over in your line item. What matters is that you're under or over on your total appropriations. That's why I can't give you that answer, it doesn't exist.
So Adam, I guess my point is, does Adam have anything to start any of the paving? Cause front road and some of the town roads are, they're bringing to the asphalt.
Paving like asphalt paving?
Yes.
I don't think that there's gonna be any asphalt paving done this spring or this summer. What Adam is focusing on is trying to get the top layer done on all of the roads, which isn't, which is considered paving. It's not asphalt paving. But as far as I know, Adam doesn't have any plans to do any asphalt paving this summer. It's all gonna be focused on getting the top coats on all of the roads and then doing the mitigation work.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah. Okay, and back January twentieth, we still haven't changed those minutes that are on the thing?
Your notes went into the minutes that in, in the meeting in which you talked about it, those minutes were already signed. They were already approved by the board. So your, your comments were in the minutes for the meeting in which you spoke to them, asking for the asking for them to be changed. There was no motion, no approval, no request from the board for me to change the minutes that had already been approved and signed by the board. That's why it hasn't been changed.
Asking that they get changed, because that, that doesn't make it right. When things get sad, that's why the recording.
I understand, I agree.
They should be in the paperwork for everybody to read, instead of only what people think should go in there. They need to be changed and be accurate.
That the board has to address that, I can't just go, go
I'm asking, okay, then I'm asking the board, can we change these two dates, and I'm gonna keep going. I'm gonna
So I'm not remembering the specifics, so I think we'll need to
January twentieth and January twenty-seven.
So I think we'll need to review that and discuss that in another meeting.
And when did you, just for ease of looking it up, when did you make the request for the meeting minutes to be?
That I can't find those in those minutes either past these dates. So when you say you put them in there, I can't find them.
Oh, they're in there, I remember typing it. Okay, I'll look.
Any other public, public comments?
I wanna, I make a comment on the uh the, the, the amount of money people are paying for the right to know, the, cause I I did that uh Good Governance program.
Mm-hmm.
And on one of that program, that they were talking about um people paying, and they, they said it's it's legit to pay a dollar per paper, then after, after the, for the first ten, then after the, after that's fifty cents a piece. And I don't know if that's the price that you came up with, or if that's something we should talk about, cause that, that seems pretty hefty, that.
Well, um a couple of years ago, the board went to a dollar a page. And I don't honestly remember whether, if it's double-sided, that's one dollar, or if that's, I, I just don't remember that discussion. Um last year, I brought up to you, there was a change in regulations, we can start making some changes and charging for electronic copies, like if they're excessive. And I remember I brought it up um and suggested we bring it, and it never was brought up to the agenda, so I can pull out those old recommendations from NHMA for how we could change our policy. But we have to go through that and review it and
Yeah.
And update the policy. And I honestly don't remember if our policy, if it's double-sided, whether that's one dollar or two. I just remember one dollar per page.
Yeah, one dollar per page, if you double, if you're printing both sides, then that's two pages. It may be one piece of paper, but it's two pages, so if it says per page, then that's per page, not per piece of paper.
And I don't remember making that distinction, I, I just, I don't, sorry.
We need to be looking at too is, is the cost. I mean, as long as we'll cover it in the cost, cause we're not a business to make money.
Yeah.
You know, so as long as we're covering the cost of the paper and the ink, that type of thing, you know.
Yeah, and I mean printer ink, and it's also the um the value of the printer and the computer, you know, it's, it's all the stuff that goes into it, into the calculation. Yep. Okay, I make a motion that we go into non-public session. I know that we have um this one um litigation slash legal issue, Tom, you were going to bring in another one, what is, is it legal?
Uh it may go, yes, it may go to that. I need to, we need to discuss it, I'm on just the board here.
Okay, is it advice from, from legal or?
Um Yeah, well, it'll end up being a, yeah.
Is it? Well, if, but if we want to go to legal, then that should be a public discussion?
Well, if, if I'm gonna talk about it, and if, once I know what I'm doing, then we can do it in public app next, next time around if we have to.
Okay.
That's what I'm looking at, cause I don't know what, I don't know what to do.
Okay, it sounds like it's questionable whether it can be non-public, but we may have to defer to the next meeting.
We may, yeah.
Okay.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna spell it out, find out what's wrong.
So I made the motion to go into non-public?
I'm sorry.